My call to order, the September 5th, 2017, meeting, formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council, roll call.
Botchway.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Dickens.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. So, welcome to all of you, welcome to your city hall. And I guess before I say anything else, I want to acknowledge the trauma that people in Houston have been going through and related areas. And also, the people exposed to Hurricane Irma, including my niece, Laura Lynn, and her husband, so it can be very difficult for people in such circumstances. All right, item two, proclamations. I think somebody's here to accept each of these proclamations, so I am going to read each of them. The first has to do with Constitution Week. And to help myself, I'm going to take off my regular glasses. Okay, proclamation, whereas September 17th, 2017 marks the 230th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and whereas the Constitution has been amended from time to time to define basic rights, to extend these rights to all persons, and to modify other specific aspects in light of contemporary concerns, and whereas it is fitting and proper to officially recognize the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. Now therefore, I James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of the City of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2017, to be Constitution Week in Iowa City, and reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. I think Kathy Pezly is here to accept the proclamation, is that right Kathy?
Yes.
Could you come up please?
On September 17th, 1787, in Independence Hall in Philadelphia, the US Constitution was signed fulfilling a promise that the Declaration of Independence had made 11 years prior. In 1955, to celebrate this great event, Constitution Week was initiated by the Daughters of the American Revolution, and it was officially declared by President Eisenhower in 1956. The members of Pilgrim Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution are appreciative of the proclamation of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Thank you Mayor Throgmorton. The National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution was founded in 1890 by four women, two southern and two northern. Their goal was to heal the terrible wounds still bleeding from the Civil War. Our founders believed that a call to a common bond, our ancestors who fought together in the Revolutionary War to liberate us and found our country would be a unifying and healing process. Today, the objectives of the DAR are historic preservation, promotion of education, patriotic endeavor. Pilgrim Chapter was chartered in 1898 in Iowa City and has celebrated almost 120 years of service to the community. Membership is open to interested individuals who can trace their lineage to a revolutionary ancestor. Again, thank you.
Thank you Kathy. Okay, the next proclamation has to do with National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month, first recognized in 1968, begins September the 15th and ends October the 15th, and whereas seven Latin American countries, Chile, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, Mexico, and Nicaragua, all achieved independence during the month of September, and whereas Iowa City's Hispanic and Latino/Latina community consists of diverse peoples of Spanish culture and origin, and whereas this diverse community strengthens and enriches Iowa City through its presence. Now therefore, I James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of the City of Iowa City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim September the 15th through October the 15th, 2017, to be National Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourage residents to celebrate the many ways in which Iowa City is enhanced by its Hispanic and Latino/Latina communities. Barbara Kutsko, I think, could you come up please? Hi Barbara, it's nice to see you. Do you want to say anything? You don't have to, it's up to you.
Good evening everyone, I'm Barbara Kutsko, and I'm one of the commissioners on the Iowa City Human Rights Commission, and I just want to thank you for this proclamation, Mayor. I want to encourage everyone in the room to celebrate, embrace, and cherish the diversity within our state, particularly now during this very tumultuous time within our country. Celebrate, let's learn to celebrate all immigrants. Oh, I'm sorry.
Celebrating a little too early over there.
That was very exciting.
Let's celebrate each other, and I hope that you do plan to attend one or more of the events that will be taking place around the City of Iowa City. And let's learn to celebrate not only during the month, but throughout the year, one another. Thank you so much.
Thank you Barbara. All right, and the third is Play Evolution, September the 17th through the 29th. All right, no more balloons blown up, right? Whereas a play deficit exists in our society, is this a diagnosed ailment, play deficit? Whereas a play deficit exists in our society, a very real decline in unstructured play which has critical implications for the health of our community, and whereas children's media usage has soared in the past two decades, with the average American child engaging in seven hours, 38 minutes of media use each day, and whereas play is critical to children's healthy brain development and building active, healthy bodies, and whereas play allows children to use their creativity while developing their imagination, dexterity, and physical cognitive and emotional strength, and whereas unstructured play allows children to learn how to work in groups, to share, to negotiate, to resolve conflicts, and to learn self-advocacy skills, and whereas play helps children develop new competencies that lead to enhanced confidence and the resilience they will need to face future challenges, and whereas play is just as important for adults, especially in the workplace, keeping one functional under stress, refreshing the mind and body, triggering creativity and innovation, increasing energy, and helping to prevent burnout, and whereas play is so important to optimal child development that the United Nations High Commission for Human Rights has recognized it as a right of every child, and whereas above all, play is a simple joy that is a cherished part of childhood. Now therefore, I James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of Iowa City, do hereby proclaim September the 27th through the 29th, 2017, a Play Evolution, and encourage all residents of all ages to support and promote the idea that unstructured, unplugged, unlimited play is a critical component of healthy development for community members of Iowa City. All right, Deb, Dunk Hazy?
Dunk Haze, that's close.
Dunk Haze, yeah. Come on up Deb.
We're going to invite you all to play.
Yeah, so we should do a little crapping.
Now you've got to hold it tight.
Do not let go.
There we go, until we tell you.
Oh, that was my favorite caller.
Okay, you can have it Terry if you want.
Oof, she let go.
Okay, you've got a little.
I'll talk to my cat.
You've got a little preview.
Got it. Okay.
Hold on to the bottom.
What's in the bags?
You don't want to know.
Dough. Thank you.
Are we ready? Now, for you to hear I say, let the Play Evolution begin, then you get to release it after I cheer, okay? Okay, ready? Ready? One, two, three, four. Imagine, create, discover, explore. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Let the Play Evolution begin!
Excellent, thank you. Actually, I have a proclamation, you know.
Oh, good. Ben, do you want to grab that from Mayor Throgmorton?
Could you just take this back to Deb?
Thank you. Thank you very much. We would like to thank you Mayor Throgmorton and the entire City Council for giving us the opportunity to come and launch our Play Evolution here at your City Council meeting tonight. Right here in Johnson County, we are the only place in the United States that we are aware of that launches a Play Evolution every year, this is our third year to do it. It's organized by both communities, Iowa City, Corleville, by the Parks and Rec, by the libraries, by Forsey's Community Coordinated Childcare, Simple Abundance Childcare, and the Iowa Children's Museum. We are offering a free calendar, a special Play Evolution events from September 16th through the 29th. It starts on the 16th with the Iowa City Farmers Market Kids Day, where we'll be launching rockets, paper rockets, and doing all kinds of bubble play. On to Move It, Dig It, Do It at the Iowa Children's Museum on the 17th, there's a read-in at the Corleville Library, lots of bubble play throughout the community at childcare centers and retirement homes, we wanted the play to be intergenerational this year. We're doing a tailgating party for kids at Mercer Park on September 23rd, celebrating the Golden Birthday Party of Morrison Park in September 24th, and it ends on the 29th with a Corleville Food Bank and Public Library Community Dinner, and a STEM Family Free Night at the Iowa Children's Museum. We really appreciate this community's support of our Play Evolution every year, thank you.
All right.
Sorry about the balloons.
Thanks to all of you, and we have our own Play Dough now, which I certainly will play with as soon as I get home. Thanks for coming, it's great to see all of you again. Oh, what's this? It's stuck on me.
Take a break.
All right, I don't know, what's coming up next?
You can have mine Terry.
Yes, we have special recognition tonight for Mr. Boothroyd, Doug Boothroyd, has been attending public meetings like this one for forty, almost 42 years, not quite 42 years, and at council's recommendation, a great thought it was, we had communications put together a video, we asked them to take Doug's 42 years and condense it into a video of two minutes, so they accepted that challenge, and we play that for you tonight.
What can we do about the light?
It worked and then it didn't.
Doug was a pioneer of technology, as you see in this video, and he could probably figure out this task.
Love that collar Doug.
Yeah, we'll just leave it frozen.
My time with the city has been an absolutely amazing experience. I came to the city fresh out of graduate school with textbook knowledge of planning, but not a practical world experience, and during those 42 years, I worked with such an amazing number of different people. And what the Comprehensivity Plan does is it's a community involvement process where we vision what we'd like to have the community look like, how to make it a better place to live, how to maintain what we have. When it comes to code enforcement, I've said that we're here as a resource, and we're here to help people accomplish their goals and succeed, we're not here to punish people. Now I recognize that with code enforcement, there are going to be times where you have to cite people and take them to court, but that's the, that should be the exception to Technology has streamlined our operations, has made us more effective in terms of managing information, we do our inspections in the field with iPads, we have electronic submittal of plans, so people don't even have to come in to submit their plans, they can do it all over the internet. I'm most proud, I believe, of the staff that has come on board with me over the 42 years. They're very passionate about what they do, they are very committed to what they're doing, their professionalism is exceptional. I really appreciate the fact that I had this opportunity to work with so many amazing people, and to see the changes that we envisioned over the last 42 years, to see it happen, to see the community grow in a very positive way, that's been, that's been the thing that
Nice video, well done. So Doug, why don't you just stay there, I want to, till I finish this, I want to read a proclamation to you, and it gives me great pleasure to be able to do so. It'll take a while, which is maybe appropriate, because you're known for being pretty talky. All right, City of Iowa City proclamation, whereas Douglas W. Boothroyd started his career as an assistant planner with the City of Iowa City on September 22nd, 1975, was promoted to Planner/Program Analyst 1 on January 22nd, 20, sorry, January 22nd, 1979, and Planner/Program Analyst 2 on June 27th, 1979, Acting Senior Planner on March 1st, 1980, and Senior Planner on March 1st, 1981, and Director of Housing and Inspection Services on May 29th, 1984. And whereas Doug became the city's first Neighborhood and Development Services Director on March 10th, 2014, successfully merging the Departments of Housing and Inspection Services and Planning and Community Development. And whereas Doug has worked diligently to increase affordable housing, been a proponent of universal design standards and superior code enforcement, ensuring all residents have safe, accessible, and healthy housing, and whereas recognizing the value of economic development, neighborhood stabilization, and metropolitan transportation planning, Doug has also encouraged the use of technology to streamline development processes and improve effectiveness. And whereas Doug has supported achievements in environmental sustainability, assisting in the evaluation and analysis for Iowa City's Star Community Four-Star Rating, as well as ensuring a voice for environmental projects throughout Iowa City, and whereas staff will truly miss his institutional knowledge, wisdom, decisiveness, wit, and smile, and whereas Doug shared his talents with the American Planning Association, serving as the Iowa Chapter President from 1990 to 1992, and as an APA Board Member from 1988 to 1994. And whereas Iowa City would like to thank Doug Boothroyd, Director Boothroyd, and recognize his leadership, dedication, and commitment to Housing and Development Services in Iowa and in the Iowa City community for over 42 years, and wishes Doug, Bonnie, and their family health and happiness as they start the next chapter of their life. Now therefore, I James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of the City of Iowa City, do hereby declare Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, as Douglas W. Boothroyd Day in Iowa City, and acknowledge Director Boothroyd's character and fortitude in making this community a better place in which to live. Doug, could you come up please?
This means so much to me, it's a little bit emotional, accepting this, it really is a great way to cap 42 years of working for the City of Iowa City, and I'm going to remember this moment for a long time. So I do want to thank you all for this, as was mentioned in the video, it's just been an amazing 42 years for me. When you have the opportunity to do a job that you love, and you know each day when you come, that you have also the opportunity to make a difference, what could be more fun? And so, you know, it was a difficult decision to say goodbye after 42 years to end this particular chapter of my life, but it was the right decision, it's something I am looking forward to doing in terms of being able to step back, change my pattern and routines in life, take the time to appreciate things around me, my family, new adventures that I want to take on, so I am looking forward to that very much. I wouldn't have had this 42 years of experience with the city if it wasn't for Bonnie, her support and encouragement over the years. I had to quit my job as a teacher to go back to graduate school in 1974, to get my master's degree, that was taking a risk, because I wasn't sure I could get employed. Turned out that as soon as I got my master's degree, the City of Iowa City offered me a job, so everything just, you know, kind of happened, and the rest of it is history. But over the years, I've worked with so many wonderful people, and I've spent thousands of hours, it seems like, in this building, but I've worked with, I've had great colleagues, I've had, you know, the public, Planning Zone Commissions, Board of Adjustments, City Councils, many mayors, many city managers, and it's been both professionally and personally enriching, and a process that I'll cherish for the rest of my life, and we've had many successes, that is due to all that collaboration and all that opportunity to work with these talented people to bring things to, to make a difference in this community. As I think about the future for this area, I know that you all have some things to think about with regard to neighborhood stabilization, and I feel that I'm glad I was around here long enough to have some input in that process, and I know that the recommendations that a city manager and staff are, are going to present to you later in the month are going to do a really good job, I'm really pleased to see that, I think it's going to really help and maybe improve some of the issues with regard to stabilization, so I'm really think that's a very positive step forward. You know, I, I'm going to miss everybody as I leave, and it's going to be a transition, but I wish you all the success in the future, and thank you for this proclamation.
Thanks Doug, you will be missed. All right, but we do have a meeting to go on with. Item three, consider adoption of the consent calendar as presented or amended.
So moved, second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Taylor. Discussion, hearing none, roll call please.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Throgmorton.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes. Motion carries 7-0, could I have a motion to accept correspondence for item 3E1, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by Thomas, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Aye.
Sorry, sorry Kingsley, all, motion carries. Item four, a community comment, this is for items that do not appear on the formal meeting agenda, so if anybody would like to speak with regard to any item that's not on the formal meeting agenda, please step forward and, and say your piece, please state your name and take not more than five minutes, please. Good evening.
I'm Carol Ogson, Community and Access Services Coordinator at Iowa City Public Library. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about Bookmobile services. I know that you read the memo that was in your packet earlier, but I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to give an update about the Bookmobile services, what started this past June. As you know, we're a city of literature, and we value our stories, and once the Bookmobile hit the streets, we started hearing lots of wonderful stories about how the Bookmobile was making a big difference in our community. During the summer schedule, our Stories in the Park programs were happy places with many cheerful stories. Mondays at Willow Creek, Wednesdays at Weatherby, and that was an added, we didn't used to do Stories in the Park at Weatherby, so that was a new location this summer, and then Fridays at Mercer Park. Each Bookmobile visit was complemented by a storytime, there were games that were led by Iowa City Parks and Recreation staff, the program generated 1,186 people counted at the programs, 1,318 Bookmobile visits, and 1,958 checkouts. That was just at Stories in the Park programs. What's my favorite story? At the end of the summer, I had to say goodbye to two of my friends that would come and see me at Mercer Park on Friday mornings, and I promised them a postcard, so I sent them a postcard, and I just saw their dad in the library a week ago Sunday, and he said they're working on sending a postcard back to me. So two new friends that I made. Another of my favorite stories, Mark Falk, who's a music professor at Co College, he wrote the most wonderful story about the Bookmobile, and he played it at the Stories in the Park programs one week, and if you haven't heard it, you can see it on YouTube or I wrote a blog post about it, but a warning, the song will get in your head, and it might not get out, maybe for even a week or two, and I do have to admit that when I drive the Bookmobile, I sing the song, because it's just such a happy song, I won't sing it for you tonight, though. I've had telephone calls from Legacy Assisted Living, "We love the Bookmobile, bring more large print." And there's no reward better than seeing the difference you make for someone by connecting them to access to library materials. We've had moms that don't speak English who bring their children to the Bookmobile because they want materials for their children, so they can work on their skills in the summertime. We've seen kids who come to the Bookmobile for air conditioning, they want a respite from the heat that they don't have in their home, so they hang out in the Bookmobile, they play games, and they check out books, too. We hosted a group of people from a group home who visited the Bookmobile, and I would not be honest if I didn't admit that there were many tears when we saw the first wheelchair go up the lift, and the person wheel up to the shelves and start browsing the books. On Thursday, we were at Mercer Park, we go to Mercer Park now, Thursday mornings to coincide with TOT time, and then there's also a swim program for people maybe over age 50 or so, where there were lots of people coming by the Bookmobile, and the Parks and Rec staff had us just back up to the front door, so everybody going into Mercer Park There's a group from Reeds for Your Potential that stopped by, and they were kind of peeking in the door, asking questions, and we said, "Well, come on back," and then we said, "We have a wheelchair lift," and they said, "You have a lift?" We said, "Yeah," and they said, "Well, we will definitely be back," so then all of their members could participate in bookmobile services. There were many tears of joy and happy stories when we saw what a difference the bookmobile is making in our community each week. The fall schedule started last week. We're out four days a week, Monday through Thursday. It highlights include seventeen weekly stops, rotating Wednesday mornings at Iowa City preschools, and four new stop locations. Monday features a stop at Grantwood Elementary during their English language learning class that they're offering. Last week, we had a lot of kids come and check out items. We're hoping that they bring their parents back in the future. As I said, Thursday mornings, we're at tot time at Mercer, and in a very short time, we've generated a lot of new stories. At Emerson Point last week on Shannon Drive, one of our staff members reported, "I lost track of how much I use the wheelchair lift at Emerson, tons." Such happy and excited people, many new library cards for people who hadn't used their cards in ages. From Oak Knoll, the story was, "It's like a party at Oak Knoll. Ten folks on right now, lots of materials getting checked out, and many happy people." And from Waterfront Hy-Vee, a patron got on the bookmobile and said, "Wow, I just came to get a salad, and I found the bookmobile." So we partnered with Antelope Lending Library and the National Bookmobile Day Celebration in April. In the summer, when their items were returned to us, we returned it to their house. If our items were returned to them, they put it in the East Side Book Drop, so the materials came back to us, and we certainly appreciated that collaboration. We coordinated our summer schedules to assure that we weren't in the same place at the same time, and we recently learned they're extending their schedule beyond the summer, too. We look forward to future collaborations with them. We also look forward to more stories from the road. I want to express to you how grateful we are for the many stories that you made possible by bringing bookmobile services from the Iowa City Public Library to our community. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
It seems like a terrific success so far.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent memo, too. We mentioned that during the work session, yeah. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move to item five, which is planning and zoning matters. Item five A, rezoning, Riverfront Crossings, Prentice Street. This is an ordinance rezoning, twenty-five-hundred square feet of property from planned high-density multifamily residential, PRM zone, to Riverfront Crossings, Central Crossings, RFC CX Zone, for property located at one-one-four East Prentice Street. This is second consideration, but the applicant requests expedited action. Before we get into this, does anybody need to make any ex parte disclosures? Me neither. Okay, could I have a motion to waive, sorry, to waive giving second consideration?
I move that the rule requiring the ordinances must be considered and voted on for passage at two council meetings prior to the meeting at which it is to be finally passed, be suspended, that the second consideration vote be waived, and that the ordinance be voted on for final passage at this time.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Dickens. Discussion? I can say I don't see anything problematic with this, given the particular rezoning involved. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Cole.
Yes.
Dickens.
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batschway?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Move final adoption at this time.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Dickens. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Dickens.
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batschway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Dickens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Sorry, Kingsley, I've got to get my timing a little bit more.
There's a three-second delay.
Yeah. Item five B, rezoning, historic landmark designation for Unitarian Universalist Church. This is an ordinance rezoning approximately point-two-zero acres of property from central business support, CB five, to central business support with an historic preservation overlay, CB five slash OHP zone, located at ten South Gilbert Street. This is second consideration. Again, are there any ex parte disclosures?
No.
Me neither. Could I have a motion, please?
Move second consideration.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, was that you, Terry?
Yep.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Dickens. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
MEMS?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batschway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item five C, rezoning, Country Club Estates, Rare Road, west of Lake Shore Drive. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning approximately twenty-one-point-seven-seven acres of property located north of Rare Road and west of Lake Shore Drive, from rural residential RR one, that's four-point-one-six acres, and interim development single-family residential, IDRS, that's seventeen-point-six-one acres, to low-density, single-family residential, RS five zone, and this is second consideration. Does anybody need to make ex parte disclosures? Okay, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by MEMS. Discussion?
I'll probably be voting in favor of this. I was initially a little leery of the size of the development with eighty homes in that part of town, and the possible increase in traffic as far as near the school zone, and some of the concerns that came out of the Good Neighbor Meeting and the Homeowners Association, but I think a lot of those items have been addressed, so I will probably still vote in favor of it then.
Okay. That's in your district, isn't it, Paul?
Yes, and it is my district, yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batschway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by Thomas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five D, Levick, First Edition. This is a resolution approving the extra territorial preliminary plat of Levick, first subdivision, Johnson County, Iowa. Could I have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
I think we should do that first, right? We do the, yeah, could I have a motion, Susan?
Yep.
Second.
Seconded by Dickens. Discussion? John, yet?
Mayor, members of council, this property is located just west of the Churchill subdivision, and it borders the city limits on the east side of the property. The property to the west is unincorporated Johnson County, and then to the west of that is Old Town Village, to give you some context. The property is within the fringe area, and it is within the growth area, and therefore the city and Johnson County both need to approve a subdivision request. This is an image of the existing house on the property. There's currently one house, and this is the proposed subdivision, and I'll walk you through it. Herbert Hoover Highway is on the north. The existing house would be on the new Lot One, and what is proposed is a second lot, residential lot, just to the south of Lot One, for a second house. The property was recently rezoned from commercial to residential in Johnson County. As part of that process, the city and the county agreed one additional lot would be reasonable, but with any further development and with any annexation of adjacent properties, it would be appropriate at that time to annex the property into Iowa City. With the one lot, it is still set up to extend Grindstone Lane to the west across the property, providing an east-west connection. The existing house and the new structure would be on private wells and sewers, septic system, but upon annexation would be required to connect to city water and sewer. Staff recommends approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval.
So, John, on first glance, this looks like an inappropriate transition between Churchill Hill Estates and the Old Town Village area, and, you know, because you have a certain kind of subdivision immediately to the east, and then the neighborhood commercial development almost literally immediately to the west. So instead of one building, there are going to be two buildings. It seems like an inappropriate transition, so.
Well, the property is zoned, the property is zoned residential in Johnson County. It does meet the county subdivision standards, and it allows for the future extension of infrastructure across the property. I think what is different between what is proposed here and the adjacent Churchill Meadows subdivision is these are larger lots than what is immediately to the east.
So the property immediately to the west is still in the county, correct?
That's correct.
And what is that currently zoned?
I believe that's also residential.
Yeah, I mean, I'll support. It's gone through the county, it's gone through, you know, the other processes. Yeah, the lots aren't the same size, but at least it's residential, and if the one to the west of it's also residential, then actually, in a way, it's a better transition to that commercial in that you don't have a lot of high-density housing budding up against the commercial. You've got people who, you know, have the larger lots, they've got that space. I don't know if what's to the west of that would ever, you know, be, try to be subdivided or not. Looks like that house sits pretty far back from the road as it is.
There is one home next to that, to the west, which is the Jensen House, because that was Paul Boyd's original home. It's right by the driveway where you go in.
Oh, right here.
That's the Jensen House. That will stay there?
For the foreseeable future.
That's going to stay there?
Okay. Yeah.
Jim, are you feeling like there should be greater density at that location? Is that what you're getting at?
I think it'd be much more appropriate for townhouses, rowhouses, et cetera, to be located near the neighborhood commercial development, and then phased down to single-family detached, et cetera, in Churchill Hill Estates. I'm just thinking about this as a land development, urban planning kind of thing, and it just seems to me to be ultimately an unwise use of land. I'm not trying to persuade anybody else about this, I'm just stating my view in terms of how I understand these things.
And I hear what you're saying. I think the challenge that we always have is, from a, you know, from our perspective, what might be the best use of land, but also recognizing, within the rules that are in place, for people to do what they want with their own property. I realize that's not an absolute right by any means, but what's interesting is oftentimes what we're trying to do is decrease density, you know, if there's too much density, you know, next to a commercial or type site, and here, this isn't, this is not even immediately adjacent to the commercial. We've still got that one property or, you know, in between that it appeared there was a house on that sits back quite a ways, and that could sit that way for twenty, thirty, forty years, too.
Certainly could.
Yes, I would also point out, this is, the property is in unincorporated Johnson County currently.
But we do have the legal right to vote yea or nay on the rezoning, is that correct?
Subdivision.
I'm sorry, subdivision.
Subdivision, that's correct.
Yeah. But we're considering the rezoning tonight. No, I'm sorry.
No, this is the subdivision.
I see, right, I was looking at the wrong item.
Subdivision.
Ah, yeah. Well, I think we should just vote unless other people have strong views you want to express, and let it proceed. So, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
No.
Batschway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one, Throgmorton in the negative. Item six, fiscal year 2018 budget amendment, this city budget amendment and certification resolution, that's what we're talking about here. I'm going to open the public hearing, if I can find my mallet. Would anybody like to address this? Dennis, did you plan to, did you plan to speak, anybody? All right, you don't have to, I was just wondering if you wanted to. Anybody else want to address this topic? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Move to resolution.
Second.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by Thomas. Discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Batschway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item seven, alcohol in parks. This is an ordinance amending Title IV entitled Alcoholic Beverages, and Title X entitled Public Ways and Property to Allow Alcohol in Park Shelters. This is pass and adopt, but staff request indefinite deferral. Could I have a motion for indefinite deferral, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by MEMS, seconded by Dickens. Discussion? I wonder if anyone would like to state, Simon, I know you and I were both present at the Partnership for Alcohol Safety meeting. Do you feel free to briefly state what we heard at that particular meeting?
There wasn't a clear consensus from the group. Probably, I'd say about ten people spoke up, majority of whom were uncomfortable moving in this direction. A lot of it just had to do with the mixed messages that they thought that this may send to the student community, into the university community. Not any, I wouldn't characterize it as strong opposition, and please stop me if you had a different perspective of what was said, but just a discomfort with it, and given that it's such an important stakeholder group that's put together specifically to look at issues such as this, you know, we didn't see any strong reason to move forward in the face of that type of discomfort from that group. So staff is recommending that we defer the third reading of this indefinitely.
Good, thank you. I guess I'll elaborate briefly. I'm going to quote from an email I received from the staff person, the staff liaison or whatever, for the Partnership for Alcohol Safety, and in it, she writes, "I wanted to follow up with you regarding the ordinance change discussion we had at PAS. I believe there were many valid concerns regarding the allowance of alcohol in the rental shelters of the, of city parks, and from the university aspect, it could send a conflicting message. It may not seem like a big issue to most, but over the last several years, there has been a tendency to relax alcohol policies rather than tighten them. We believe this is an important decision that could have unintended consequences, and wonder if there's any benefit to delaying the third vote and so on." So that's why we're at this moment where we're recommending indefinite deferral. So would anybody like to discuss this topic? Anybody in the audience or council members? Yes, ma'am, please. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Judy Foal, I'm neighborhood president from Tana Kai.
Thank you, Judy. Nice to see you.
Just a second, so I stick this on here. It's been a while since I've been up here. Actually, I've been neighborhood president since we started a neighborhood, when the Danes sold the farmland and became Quanus Park area, and Tag and all the other. Anyway, the idea of the neighborhood stabilization, we have a lot of concern with the neighbors about this. I have signatures, I just started, Sunday afternoon, but I've got thirty-five signatures here, from neighbors who are concerned that we need to maintain the separation of requests for shelter and the separation of alcohol use. For maybe some of the bigger areas where you've got more space around, between where a shelter is and where homes are, maybe it doesn't bother, won't bother them to have potentially kegger parties, or anyway, loud parties. We have had some trouble in the past with some other things going on periodically at the park that they've had to address, and we think this would just be adding more potential for problems for neighborhood parks.
Thank you, Judy. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Rachel Zimmerman Smith, and I live on the other side.
I'm Rachel Zimmerman Smith, and I live on the other side of Willow Creek Park in the Pennington neighborhood on Tag Drive, and my neighborhood shares Judy's concerns. I guess if it's not broke, don't fix it. This is not broke, so don't fix it. I don't see any public outcry for this, really. I haven't, I was surprised to see it in the paper, and I thank the Gazette for publishing an article on it because it alerted me and Judy to this. And no one that I spoke to in my neighborhood, and I did speak to a lot of people, supported it. The park is a nice, safe place for kids to go by themselves, most of them are right next to neighborhoods, and there's plenty of places to drink in Iowa City. I think True Blood allows for permits to have alcohols in that shelter, so there's no shortage of places for people to have parties with alcohol here, so we agree with the staff recommendation and hope that you follow it. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, council discussion. Hearing none, roll call, please. This is on a motion for indefinite deferral.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by Mims. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
I did it again, Kingsley. Got to give you three seconds, that's how much time I need, right, three seconds? Item eight, under 21 Amendment for Shout. Ordinance amending Title IV, Alcoholic Beverages, Chapter Five, Prohibitions and Restrictions, Section Eight, Persons Under the Legal Age and Licensed or Permitted Establishments, subsection C referencing the city's under 21 law, adding an exception for those working with a law enforcement agency. This is first consideration.
Move first consideration.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Taylor. Discussion?
This is what I would consider a fairly routine item, just to clarify that individuals that are assisting law enforcement can enter the premises of a drinking establishment as prompted by the University of Iowa Department of Public Safety's new program, Shout, which stands for Students Helping Out. This is a new initiative, it's a collaboration that's operated by the UI Department of Public Safety, but certainly in collaboration with Iowa City Police and the Iowa City Downtown District as well. And generally speaking, those are student ambassadors that have training on bystander intervention and can help assist people that need assistance with a variety of things, including getting safe rides home in the evenings. I can tell you, the report I got back from the police department after this weekend is that the student ambassadors, the Shout staff, were very helpful to them as they worked the downtown crowd after the football game. I know they were very appreciative of that resource being available, so this is just a code modification to clarify that they have the ability, again, to enter the premises of a drinking establishment.
Okay, good deal. All right, any further discussion?
I was going to ask Ben or Jeff to explain the program a little bit, because I had not heard of it, but Jeff touched on kind of the issues I had questions about as far as the training that these young folks have, and perhaps how many of them are there, and like a paid position for them. It sounds like a great program.
I do believe it is a program. I can get those details and follow up with you. I don't know how many there are, but I know they were sufficiently busy this first weekend, so I can follow up with some more details, Pauline.
Thank you.
Okay, okay. Could I have a roll call, please?
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item nine, unattended vehicle ordinance amendment. This is an ordinance amending Title IX Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter Three, Rules of the Road, Section Nine, General Driving Restrictions, subsection C referencing unattended vehicles to allow safely parked vehicles with the motor running to be left unattended, matching state code. Could I have a motion for first consideration, please?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dickens, seconded by Thomas. Discussion? Jeff, do you?
Yeah, again, this is a cleanup item in our code that mirrors some changes that were made at the state level. Currently, our code prohibits vehicles from being left unattended unless their motor is completely turned off and the keys are out of the ignition. Now with remote starters, it's very common for someone to start their vehicle while they are not in the vehicle, and so this just cleans that up to, again, allow for that type of circumstance to occur and mirror our ordinance, our code language with the state law.
Good, thanks. Any discussion from council members? Anybody in the audience want to address this? Okay, hearing none, roll call, please.
Dickens?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 10, rent abatement in emergencies. This is an ordinance amending Title 17 entitled Building and Housing, Chapter Five entitled Housing Code, to provide the abatement of rent in emergencies. This is first consideration.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Dickens. Discussion? Good evening, Stan.
Mayor, council?
Nice to see you.
Good to see you again. This is one of the 15 steps that were part of the Affordable Housing Action Plan, and while this is step 15, doesn't necessarily mean that we are done with all the steps. So it deals with rent abatement for emergency situations where we're not actually going to vacate the property, but there's substantial reasons for us to reach out and help the tenants involved. So one of the things that we wanted to highlight, state code does allow for this when we find dwellings that are not in compliance with the housing code. I think it's important to note that not in compliance with the housing code is left up to us, the city officials. So we're looking for items such as not providing essential services like water, sewer, electrical heat, other health, life, safety issues, or if we come across properties that are being rented without a rental permit, we're automatically going to assume that they're not in compliance with their housing code. Again, it's a city-initiated action with notice provided to both the tenant, the landlord, and if the landlord is different from the property owner, that notice will be provided also. From there, the rent abatement, the landlord cannot legally evict for non-payment of rent for the rent that was abated. So I think that's important to note, that it just deals with the rent that's being abated. If they're late on other rents, there could be issues there, or they can't withhold a rent deposit for the rent that was abated. That's it.
Any questions for Stan? Has staff reached out to landlords so that they know what's going on with this?
No, not at this time.
No, they were generally aware, you know, they were aware when we adopted the plan, they knew this was one of the strategies. It's a pretty straightforward code amendment, so we have not, but we certainly can before it gets through the final stages of the approval process.
Good. I also hope that the student body is aware of this ordinance, there certainly will be after this first vote tonight, and if anybody wants to speak directly to that topic, we'd like to know about it. Okay, thanks, Stan. So, anybody else want to address this topic? Seeing no one, council discussion? I'm very glad to see it. It's on our Affordable Housing Action Plan, it's a response to the events at Rose Oaks several months ago, and I'm really pleased to see that staff has moved ahead on this.
If I could just reiterate one point, because I think this is really crucial to drive home, and Stan did mention it, but this is not a determination that the tenant can make, and we're going to have to over-communicate that. If you don't feel the landlord is doing something that he or she should do, you need to contact us, and we need to make that determination. You should not just withhold your rental payments and assume that they will be abated and that the city will support that. It's really crucial that we make that determination.
Right. Okay, hearing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Item 11, Occupy Transition Plan. This is an ordinance amending Title 18, Site Plan Review, to require notification to occupants and an occupant transition plan for any additions or alterations to a residential development with more than 12 residential units.
Move first consideration.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Dickens. Discussion? John, help us understand this, please.
This is another item from the Affordable Housing Action Plan, and also follows up on comprehensive plan amendments council approved several months ago. What this ordinance done is formalize requirements for occupant notification and an occupant transition plan associated with major site plans, which are projects more than 12 units in size. The ordinance has the following elements. Number one, within 24 hours of a site plan submittal, the applicant is required to send written notice to all the current occupants of a development informing them of the application, the intent to develop, the anticipated construction timeline, and project phasing. Number two, the applicant shall submit an occupant transition plan if there are occupants on the property. The plan must include the current number of occupants, a general description of current contractual obligations, when leasehold interest expires, and a construction timeline and phasing plan. Number three, the site plan cannot be approved until the city council considers and approves the occupant transition plan. That process allows for a public forum of the occupant transition plan, allows for the occupants to speak in a public forum to council regarding the transition plan. In approving a transition plan, the city council may impose conditions to address the impact of redevelopment, and this is important to note, but council may not prevent the landlord or the tenant from exercising their rights under Iowa law, including a decision not to renew leases, eviction for cause, and imposing requirements and relocation benefits outside of the, what's accounted for in the lease. Those are the essential elements of the ordinance. Be glad to take any questions?
I do have at least one, John.
Sure.
If I read the text of the ordinance correctly, it indicates that for major site plans, the director of NDS or those owners of 20% or more of the property located within 200 feet of the exterior boundaries of the proposed development may request review of the site plan by the Planning and Zoning Commission and so on.
That's correct, and that's currently in the ordinance.
That's what I wanted to clarify, whether that's the current requirement or a new requirement.
It is, yes.
Okay, good deal. And then I wanted to make a couple suggestions, and I don't know if these suggestions would require amendment to the proposed ordinance or could be done administratively. Anyhow, when we were involved with the Rose Oaks development, one of the things that stood out was that many of the residents did not read or speak English. So I'm wondering if the ordinance, or administratively, we could require that when such a circumstance exists, that the owners convey the notice in the languages that are used by the actually existing residents of the development. I don't know, Spanish, Swahili, you know, et cetera. And then the second thing I'm wondering about has to do with the language in which the notice is written, and this sounds like an administrative thing to me, but anyhow, it'd be one thing to convey to the residents in very sort of obtuse, legalese, what's involved versus doing it in ordinary language that's easy for people to understand, and I think the latter is what's called for. So I'm just wondering about those two things. Can we require that the notice has to be in ordinary language, and then secondly, that it be made available to, in languages that the actually existing residents can read?
If you're going to put the onus on the owner of the unit to incur costs to translate, that would be a substantial. But if you're going to put all that onus on the city to do that administratively, that we can do and still have first consideration.
Okay. My guess is that this is, would not be a major financial burden for the city to do, but I think it's crucial to have that kind of translation.
Yeah, it's really hard to anticipate what those translation needs may be, just thinking back to the Rose Oaks situations, there was, I forget the number of residents, certainly several dozen, I think, trying to determine which languages needed to be, what we needed to translate to and how to communicate those out. That would have been a pretty big administrative challenge for us. You're right, the financial cost, this won't come up very frequently, and I think we could absorb the actual translations, the cost, it's more figuring out who's living there and what language do they speak, and that can be a big undertaking.
And I think the, just the process of translating would affect the timeliness of the notices, just to put that out there, but I think it is important.
All right, so help me understand how we can handle this better then, because in the Rose Oaks situation, it was a problem. People did not understand what they were being notified about, and so there's a lot of confusion, and that resulted in a lot of people in this room being pretty mad, at least in part, that that was a consequence. So how can we avoid that?
I mean, somehow people are signing leases that I'm assuming in most cases are written in English. So whether they read English or not, they're relying, they're either signing without knowing what they're signing.
I think that's typically what happens with most renters.
I'm just not sure how much as a city we can do.
It's, yeah, if you wanted staff to facilitate a translation, I suppose it would be possible to have the developer, property owner notify them that translation service is available at City Hall, and then we can assist the folks that approach us, but that critical message of where they can find translation assistance, you know, needs to be upfront and easy to be found by the.
And you'd think that would be just one page of paper that we're just having all those, and then they'd be able to come to the city to be able to access those services.
That's the solution that we're talking about for our community survey that we're getting ready to do. If you receive a survey, you can come here and we can help you. We'll have to think about internally how we process that, but we do have language line and the technology and resources available to do that. We just need to figure out where and who within City Hall can do that.
Yeah, I think we need to have a means of doing that, and I don't believe it means tonight that I or anybody else needs to vote against the ordinance, I want to pass the ordinance, but I think administratively, we need to be thinking about how to provide that, or enable that kind of translation service if necessary, you know, if it's required under the actually existing circumstances.
I think that's very important, Jim, because thinking back to the Rose Oaks situation, the number of folks that didn't really read or comprehend English very well, but they saw the word eviction or evict, and that frightened them and that scared them because they didn't understand the rest of the memo or what it was saying. So I think it's, I think your point is very important.
John, I had a question of this issue of transition assistance, and this may be a Sue question or a John question or maybe an Eleanor question, I don't know, but as I understood the analysis, that she viewed that as a function of the lease contract, and because we can't alter the lease contract, we can't do it, or was it a situation where, setting aside the lease, we don't have the home rule authority to require transition assistance as part of the transition plan? I'll have to defer to Sue on this. Do you recall what that analysis was?
We certainly don't have the home rule authority to put a condition in the lease. We can't, yeah, we can't change that relationship.
I get that.
And to the extent that we are requiring the landlord to pay, that's what you're talking about, pay assistance to the tenant. talking about, pay assistance to the tenant, right?
If they're dislocated.
If they're dislocated, well, that's an issue in the lease or just a condition of the rezoning.
Well, no, there wouldn't...
I mean, a condition of the site plan for the transition plan.
Because I guess what I'm thinking of on that is that if as a condition of the major site plan, we can impose requirements to address stormwater runoff, other things that are going to pose a cost on the developer as part of meeting our requirements for the site plan, if there is a human impact, why wouldn't we be able to then say as a condition of meeting what our expectations are for the human cost, that we could impose expectations as to what a transition plan would look like? So maybe, I hate to put you on the spot on that, but I'm wondering whether I would like to see at least an evaluation, and I guess I didn't see in the memo whether that particular issue came up, and I know at some point there maybe was a discussion about home rule authority, because I know, like, for instance, Seattle has it, San Francisco has it, is my understanding, and that's always a creature of state law. But I would at least like to look into that in terms of whether we have the authority to do that, and if so, I would like to explore what that would look like.
I wonder if Sue and then Eleanor, when she gets back, could look into this particular question and let us know what you find prior to our next meeting.
Sure.
Thanks.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to go back to your point, Jim. Is that something that, I do think it's important, is that something that can come back to us before the second reading? And I am not talking about, I'm not talking about a burden on the owner, but the city. I'm not saying that, obviously, it's an opportunity to make it available to come to the city, but I just feel like that's a lot to do for many people. That's a lot to do for me. And so I think that if we were able to propose some other solutions, I mean, just on the top of my head, I was thinking, could we extend the requirements to 24 hours to maybe 48 hours for translation, or something on that sense, it seemed like from Sue we would be able to do, as long as that administrative change is on our end.
We'll come back to you at the second reading with a proposed solution on the translation.
Is that okay with you, Kingsley?
Yes.
All right, sounds good to me. So, any further discussion?
I just want to quickly say, this is amazing. I mean, for two reasons. One, for the simple fact that, you know, this was a huge community concern. They came to us in droves via email and in person physically and said, we need you to do something. And I feel like, even though we weren't able to respond immediately, it is something. And I also think that this is, number two, I think it's the community protection. I think that frankly, you know, there are some things that we found out that happened in the Rose Oaks situation that I believe may still happen in Iowa City now. And to have this, I'm actually thinking about the rent abatement of the past one as well, to have both of these ordinances in effect, I think really signals to a large part of our community that, you know, council's listening, and we're trying to be proactive to ensure that things don't happen the same way again.
I agree, Kingsley, and I'm thrilled that staff brought this to us. I'm really pleased to be able to move ahead on it. I think it's needed and a very good proposal before us. Any further discussion? Hearing now on roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Dickens?
Yes.
MEMS?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven to zero. Item 12, announcement of vacancies. Applicants must reside in Iowa City and be 18 years of age unless specific qualifications are stated. We have two vacancies to fill on expired terms upon appointment to the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy for Jefferson Street Representative to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission, and one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Telecommunications Commission. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, September the 12th, 2017. Item 13, community comment. I've agreed to let Ben do this pretty much every meeting at this point. So, Ben, what do you have on your mind?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. As I said last time, I kind of just want to use this as an opportunity to kind of like give you all an update on what UIG has been up to in between our council sessions. John, earlier you mentioned murals in Cincinnati. Well, I'd like to let you know that we now have murals in Iowa City. UIG, they just got done with an initiative where various tunnels on campus, they opened up that space to allow student artists to kind of give them an area to express themselves. And kind of the theme of this project was to celebrate historically underrepresented communities in the student body. And so it really is kind of a neat and intimate space when you walk through these tunnels and you kind of see how these communities think of themselves and how they want to express themselves. So I would really encourage you all, if you get a chance, to kind of go some urban exploration through the Iowa City or University of Iowa campus and kind of check that out. The second thing I have is if you'll, as you go downtown and you use the restroom, you might see these posters that the University of Iowa partnered up with our VAP in the Downtown District. They're sexual assault resource posters, and so what they do, they have very clear definitions of what sexual assault is, what consent is, what it is not, and kind of various strategies to kind of intervene. And then ultimately, they have the resources for our VAP, the Women's Resource and Action Center. So I really would like to publicly thank the Iowa City Downtown District, our VAP, for their collaboration and for their willingness to let us use their space. And then the last thing, earlier today, the Attorney General Jeff Sessions announced that the Trump administration will be removing the DACA program, the Deferred Action for Childhood Arrivals program, which effectively gives work permits or schooling permits for students who are brought here illegally as their parents came here. They grew up in the United States. They don't really know any other country than the United States. So this really affects our student community, and I would kind of encourage you all as a council, as individuals, to kind of reach out within your own communities, within your own networks, to reach out to federal legislators, encourage them to keep it, keep the program, and then if there is anything that you as a city council can do, whether it be something as simple as a resolution of support for our communities, or maybe something more substantive, I don't know the legalities of that, I would really encourage you all to look into that as options. So, but other than that, thank you very much for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ben. Good to see you again. All right, we'll move on to City Council information, item 14. Rockne, you want to start, please?
Well, yesterday, we had the Labor Day picnic, and I want to just commend City Fed for another wonderful event. It's always so fun to connect with all the different brothers and sisters in the labor movement, and, you know, obviously, this community would not function without everyone that gets up and works really hard to make our community go. So it was a really enjoyable time and really, really had a good time. Beautiful day.
Well, I missed the last council meeting, but I was, since then, I've been in Denver, and then I was lucky enough to go to Europe, and...
Where'd you go?
From Amsterdam to Basel. And what you find yourself doing, if you've been on the council long enough, is you start comparing your city to other cities wherever you go. And we're very lucky in this town that we care so much about the ADA accessible, because when you get to Europe, it's, a lot of it's not there. So I talked to Harry Homestead about this, and he says, there's actually a book out that tells you what cities to avoid in Europe that don't have it. So we can always do better, but it's very interesting to see. And in public transportation, in Basel, they have trains that go all over little inner city that just go around the city, and they discovered that they were too high for wheelchairs to get into. So all the new ones they're putting in are now lower that you can get a wheelchair on, because we talked to several older couples there, and that was one of their biggest concerns, is they don't go out because they can't get up and downstairs, or the bathrooms are all in the basement of these places, or the trains are too high. So the city has addressed that. So it's kind of interesting to see, and as we move forward, maybe on our train service that we're looking at with North Liberty, that would be a consideration.
Susan?
I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Honors Program and the Green Room. I don't know if any of you have seen or heard about it, but they're running, they didn't do it this week because of Labor Day, but I think the next four or five Mondays, they are having this Honors Class, the Green Room, at the Engler Theater, and had it last Monday, and it was Zach Walls was kind of the keynote, talking a lot about poverty in the United States. He had lots of statistics, a lot of statistics in a short period of time. And then Chrissy Canganelli from Shelter House was talking about the Housing First Project. And David Gould is the instructor, professor of this, and I think he runs the Honors Program. And so he just does a lot of innovative and creative things with his students. And so they have, I think it's about 80 students in the class, and so they, starting this next week, they are doing all the programming. They are in charge of everything, from greeting people as they come in to videotaping, introducing the keynote speaker. As David said, he's trying to make it like a rock event. They have kind of headliners, but then you've got the opening acts and had some music. But just wonderful, wonderful presentations from both Zach and Chrissy, and they've got some great people coming in the next five weeks. Jane Elliott, who did the Brown Eye/Blue Eye experience, Kozir Khan, the father who spoke at the Democratic National Convention, I don't remember all the other names, but if you have an interest, look at it. It's bringing the community and the university together. So it's open to the community. It started at 7:00. I got down here early. I was waited to walk up there at about quarter to 7:00. The line was all the way from the Engler up to Hertene and Stalkers, and so I just kind of stood there with Marianne Dennis waiting to see if we were even going to get in, because the line was so long. I think they said they had 478 people that came. So a lot of people from the community, a lot of people associated with the university, but they really are trying to bring the community and the university together. So they're, like I said, the next four or five, I think it's the next five Mondays, 7:00 at the Engler. I'm assuming there may be a number of these, and I wouldn't be surprised if the one with Kozir Khan is sold out. And I say sold out, there's no tickets, but I wouldn't be surprised if you don't get there and get in line early that you won't get into the theater. So, great event. Thank you to David Gould for all he's doing, I think giving students a really innovative learning environment with his class. So it was a lot of fun.
It's terrific innovation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the Engler theme, I noticed that on September 12th at 5:30, there will be a public event, Let's Talk About Iowa City's Historic Downtown. So that should be an interesting event, and from conversations we've had with Jeff, our consultant on the downtown inventory is generating some very interesting perspectives on historic preservation there. So that sounds like a worthwhile event. And then looking backward, the downtown, Iowa City Downtown District hosted an event that spoke to the Public Art Program. Thomas Agron made a presentation which featured, among other things, the Cincinnati mural program. Very interesting evening, lots of people were there. And again, it's kind of this interesting, you know, opportunity for conversations that I don't think our Public Art Program had had something like that in quite some time. So I thought it was useful and a great start. Many people at that event thanked Thomas for, and Nancy Byrd for having the event. It was very nice.
I'd like to just comment on a memo we got from Jeff regarding our own Simon Andrew. As far as I'd like to congratulate him on his achievements, his two recent classes, particularly the one, let's see, I believe he said the title is ADA Coordinator, which is excellent and certainly needed. You're talking about the disability things that we are concerned about already in the city, but a lot of folks don't realize that the population of disabled folks in our community, and people usually immediately think of folks in wheelchairs or walkers or things like that. But there's more to disability than also as far as the mental health issues and behavioral issues. There are other disabilities out there, too, and I think it's going to be very helpful, and I congratulate you on that. The other thing, I was negligent, or I missed the chance to comment on your discussion about your visit to the mayor's conference, and I wanted to just put in a plug, as a healthcare professional, I would be interested, very interested, in working together with you and any other interested parties on that opiate issue in Iowa City.
Excellent. Jeff and I have had some preliminary conversations about following up on what I heard at that conference concerning the epidemic. There was also a lengthy article in the New York Times yesterday about directly related to that, so it's gaining increasing attention nationwide. Is that it, Pauline?
Mm-hmm.
Good deal. Well, I want to mention, I want to mention several things and then end with a question for you, so...
Stay tuned.
Wait, wait for the question. So first, as you know, I wrote a public statement concerning the events in Charlottesville, Virginia, and that public statement subsequently appeared in the Press Citizen. Also, as Pauline just mentioned, and I'm going to say this for the public, really, on August 16th through the 19th, I participated in a conference of the Mayor's Innovation Project in Burlington, Vermont, and a memo about it appeared in the late handout for tonight's meeting. So that's available online now, that memo, if anybody wants to read it?
No, not yet. But it went out today. It will be when Julie finalizes everything.
Ah, okay. Next, John, Pauline, and I had a really excellent meeting with the Daily Island's terrific writing and editorial staff on the 25th of August. So were you in the room when we had that meeting?
I was.
You were? You were?
You were.
Oh, it was a terrific meeting, yeah. I think we learned a lot from the conversation. I hope it was beneficial for you as well. Oh, let's see, there's going to be a council listening post at Uptown Bills on September the 6th from 5:30 to 7:00 PM. That'd be tomorrow night. There's going to be a retirement reception for Doug Boothroy from 7:30 to 9:00 AM on September the 11th, Monday. There's a school board election coming up and a school bond referendum on September the 12th. I certainly encourage everybody to vote. The economic, the council's Economic Development Committee is going to be meeting on September the 15th from 3:00 to 4:00 PM, and we're getting very close to coming up with our set of recommendations to present to the full council. The World Cup Cyclocross is going to take place on September the 17th. Jeff, maybe you were going to elaborate on this, I don't know. Which leads to the one question I wanted to ask you all. I find myself thinking that we should have a section during our work session where individual council members have an opportunity to briefly report on anything that's happened in, on the boards that they are appointed to, like the City of Literature, like ICAD, like that Economic, Regional Economic Development Committee, like Paratransit. And, you know, I'm not saying decide right now, but it seems to me that that would be pretty fruitful, because as it is now, we go to these meetings and then nothing comes back to the council. So I think it'd be helpful to have very brief statements about any major decisions that have been made or any major topics that are coming up.
That's a good idea.
So I can bring that back up for, you know, any kind of discussion next week or next meeting during our work session, and you can say yea or nay. Okay, that's enough for me. Jeff?
I will just mention briefly, the Cyclocross event kicks off on the 14th of September, and I will be reaching out to council members to see if there's any volunteers to help greet the UCI staff and the VIPs for the race late on Thursday evening. I think they plan to get in around 9:00 or 9:30 in the evening. CVB is coordinating receptions.
So what happened last year?
We don't, we don't, we don't talk about what happened last year with that opening kickoff.
Horrible thunderstorm.
No fireworks this year.
Mother Nature had different ideas for what was going to happen that night. But, and then the racing starts on the 15th and goes to the weekend. It'll be a busy weekend with a football game in town as well. So there's been a lot of planning and coordination from law enforcement, CVB, and a whole lot of other people that are involved in logistics. But the first year was great, the second year will be even better, and we're ready to put on a show.
Good deal. Ashley?
Nothing. Thanks.
Sue? Kelly? All right. Moved by ma'am, second and by Dickens. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.